Good evening and welcome to the May 4th, 2015 Halifax Elementary School Committee Meeting. We have some special visitors joining us tonight for a presentation, so we welcome all of Mrs. Whitney's kindergarten class, and thank you to the parents for bringing them out tonight. Mrs. Ma?
Sure. I'd like to welcome our kindergarten students. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And, Mrs. Whitney, I'm going to put it to you now. I can't wait to hear the great things that they're doing in kindergarten and seeing this great video. So, Mrs. Whitney.
Thank you. So, this is our first alphabet video that I've ever done, so you'll be able to tell that. And the kids were very, very patient with me as I learned how to get it on the, jump it on the iPad, right, boys and girls? Jump it on the iPad. And we did it in different, it took about five days from start to finish. And we're gonna watch it in a second. I put up before we started, I wanted to thank, I never do anything by myself, everything's always a team. So, Mrs. Merrill's in my room, she helped me out with the video. Mrs. Fryer should be here because I can't do anything without her. When she comes in, I'll make a special mention. And Mr. Goggin doesn't want me to mention him, but he helped me with the editing, and he made DVDs for every person in the class.
That's my dad.
With the alphabet video. And, okay, these boys and girls, I have to tell you that they've got all unique personalities, and with their own set of intellectual strengths, but you're gonna, this isn't gonna be the first time you hear from them. You're gonna hear from them a lot, because they're really gonna be the movers and shakers of this generation. So, here we go. You ready? Do you wanna stand to watch the video?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Whitney, you want me to just hit that light switch right there?
This one right here? Yeah. So, it's eight minutes long, just to let you know.
A, A says apple, and apple and astronaut.
B is for back there.
D, D says apple. D says apple.
F, F says house, and elementary school.
G, G says house, and elementary school.
H, H says house, and elementary school.
I said, yeah, for the truck, jolly and trump.
A, A says cup. A is for cut, and.
L, L says school, for plant, and.
L, L says school, for plant, and.
But, M, M says, M is for mayor, and.
M, M says, M is for mayor, and.
And, Apple's for monarch, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
S says, S is for, is an iron, and.
T, T says, T, T says, T.
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 Oh, my God.
That's apple, and.
The L, L is for, is for fox, or.
X, X, I can only.
This is the letter Y. Y says duck. Y's for yellow, and.
We love kindergarten, we love kindergarten, we love kindergarten.
He says, H, H is for, is an H, H.
ABC, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z. Now I know my ABCs. Next time won't you sing with me?
Thank you, Mrs. Whitney. Thank you, boys and girls. You did a great job. I loved the video. Thank you. Thank you, parents. Thank you so much, boys and girls, and thank you, parents, for bringing these out to visit with us tonight.
You guys wanna sit with Mike? Yeah. Wanna stay with Mrs. Whitney?
Mom, let's go. We're not leaving. No. Mom is right there in that.
Just park it for like twenty minutes. Park it. Okay, this is Mrs. Fryer.
All right, acknowledge and schedule any visitors. Does anybody wish to be acknowledged or scheduled? Seeing none? Review and vote, regular minutes from April 6, 2015. Whoa, whoa, is it we have here? Hi. Sorry, I didn't see you.
My name is Gene Wyatt, and I'm on the recycling committee, and I help the PTO with recycling. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, every year has a grant program. And they could do it district-wide, it would be $30,000, and it would be divided up between the schools. And I was looking for any signatures of the school committee and principal, any interested party that would wanna apply for the grant.
Okay, I guess my question would be, what does the grant entail?
Well, it's, it would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000, and it would be district-wide, and you could use it for recycling equipment, educational material, stipends, anything that would help encourage recycling in the school.
I believe there's an article at town meeting about buying a recycling truck. Could it be put towards that?
It's just for schools.
Oh, just for the school? Okay. All right.
So, if you wanted recycling totes, or some kind of educational material, or to sort of compensate teachers or custodian staff for doing recycling, you know, things extra after school kind of thing, help compensate it for their time.
Mr. President, question?
I know Gene Wyatt. Gene has been very involved in the recycling program at Kingston Elementary and Intermediate, as well as Silver Lake. Gene is a Kingston resident, and when this started, over two years ago, Gene was involved with those schools, because that's his talent. We have signed on, in Kingston, in the school committee as well, to this grant in years gone by. Now, in years gone by, it's been by individual towns, there've been some changes to the grant. Gene believes that, that we stand a better chance, I think, together filing this grant. If we are successful, as Gene suggests, there's very little that we as, there's no matching funds involved in the school, there's no commitment, I've seen the paperwork, there's no commitment to certain actions, there's certainly a commitment to, to the concept of trying to encourage recycling and to, that end, he'll provide some equipment. So, at Silver Lake and Kingston, we have signed on to it.
Okay, I move that we support the program.
Second?
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, so, what kind of signatures do you need?
It's basically a letter of commitment on the back. It has, anyone can sign it anywhere, just to identify yourself and.
Okay. All right, so, can I hang on to this, and we can sign it after the meeting, and John can get it back to you?
And you can pick it up at the office.
Okay.
Sound good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If any teachers who already do that, you know, if they wanna sign or something like that, because I would like to reach out to people who are in each school to see what they actually need.
When do you need this back by?
May 6 is like an informational session.
Yeah.
And they'll explain the particulars of the grant. Every year, I wait for May 6, and then I have two weeks to rush around every school, and it's really stressful, so I'm trying to get a jump on it, and if I can get a commitment from different schools beforehand, and then I can go there, you know, give us a much better chance of getting the grant.
So, it seems like we can do some signing, and perhaps probably Kane can have some teachers who do want to sign on as well, and get it back to you plenty of time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the meeting minutes from April 6. I have one comment on the meeting minutes from April 6, and that has to do with the vote that we took for the technology article. The total of the amount should be $22,200, not $23,200. So, if we could amend that.
Is that a scribbler error, or is that what the state is recommending?
No, that is just a.
Scribbler?
Yes.
It's a typo, if you look at the numbers, the column of numbers, actually, it's up to 22,2.
Yep.
Also, under new business, where it talks about the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework in PARCC presentation, PARCC is, the acronym is P-A-R-C-C, and in the minutes, it says P-A-R-R-C. It lists the table. It does it several times, actually, throughout the paragraph.
I may read this.
That makes two of us. All right, so.
It gets three times in total, I saw. One of the first paragraph, one of the first bullet, and then the last paragraph.
Is this a good one?
Yeah, there's one good one, and the rest of them.
So, is there a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
So may.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Now, we have the executive session minutes from January 5, January 14, February 2, and March 2. And unless anybody on the committee objects, I'd like a motion to approve all four sets of executive session minutes to be released.
Salute.
Wait, hang.
Yeah, hold on just one.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I'll check something.
So, I had asked in the March 2 minutes, that we have it listed in here, what they had originally proposed to us, and I'll see it.
Actually, I think you asked for that, for the minutes for March 3, when we voted it, and those aren't here yet.
Okay.
So, it'll be in the next one.
Long as it's on.
Yeah, we hope to have it for the, for the next meeting.
Okay.
When we first did the agenda, and this was actually carryover from the last session, those were the, those were the minutes that were listed.
Okay.
What's your point, Paul?
All right, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Extentions?
Aye.
All right. Approval of bill, schedule, and signing of the warrants. The warrants are circulating. And we have one. Six. Regular warrants totaling $180,916.52, and then there are two cafeteria warrants also School committee correspondence and reports. I did receive two pieces of correspondence. One was addressed to me personally, and I believe Mr. Slager got one also. It was from the Office of the District Attorney, and I don't mind passing this around. It's about an opioid coalition that's coming up on May 7 during the day, so I will pass that around, so everybody has a chance to look at it. And the other was, I just didn't show it out here. A memo from the Zoning Board of Appeals concerning the application for the Chapter 40B Comprehensive Permit Project. And I will circulate this also, so everybody has a chance to read it. It's just detailing the request for liaison, and a little bit of details on the public hearing they had on March 16, and that they were having another one on April 13. And the date on this is April 13, so. I will send that around. Unfinished business, energy efficiency projects. Have we heard anything?
So, I checked with, I checked with Charlie Seale just today, and still, and nothing has changed from our, from our last meeting, so the town is planning on doing both, the lighting retrofit and upgrades, as well as putting in the new room thermostats over the summer, after the students have left, and I think it's quiet, and they can have access to the building without having to deal with, with students and teachers and staff. So, they're on schedule for that, I don't have any further discussion.
I didn't have any, and nobody notified me of anything that they would like on the agenda. Subcommittee's policy? No, it's, no, okay, negotiations?
Right now, we are still trying to set some dates, I believe. I don't know if those have been confirmed. We have a date for the custodian, was a point, and I don't, yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but, but yes, we agreed on the date, and I think it is the.
27.
The 27th, okay. The 27th, and then after the meeting, I'm hoping the three of us can get together and pick some dates and off it up for a couple of others. All right?
All right, do we need an executive session for strategy or not?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Oh, it's not up to me. It's up to the committee.
Would you folks like, I don't think we have another meeting before we're going to meet with custodians for the first time, so would you folks like to meet after, we did that afterwards?
Yeah, you can do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay. You folks wanna have a brief chat about that?
Sure.
President Eric Collaborative, there is a meeting scheduled for Thursday night, but I will be here for the round two of the Common Core.
I will be in attendance as well.
Liaison Youth and Rec.
For six years, I've done this position, and I've always felt like the sports commentator, so grateful. All right, on May 2, Youth and Rec held a fundraising craft fair for the, for the Hops Playground Play Area. Included local craftsmen, as well as newfound space painting concessions and raffle. I'd like to thank the school again for all of their support and allowing us the space to have. Currently, the sports program is now in session seven, to end officially on May 14. Fifth grade dance is to be slated 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., $8, $8 backdoor. Seven eighth grade dance, also the same, 7 to 9:30, $8 with the slip, $10 with the belt. Just one more thing, the Silver Lake Regional Middle School DC trip was held April 20 through 24. Photos of the trip are currently on, have been loaded up to the website, if you would like to take a look.
Thank you. PTO?
We had a meeting. When we spoke about a couple of things, the school choice initiative came up. There were some questions as to if it was a benefit to the town. Class size may be an issue. It seems to be the main issue. The only issue I had on possibly supporting it was a theoretical one. Some parent turns in a drug dealer on their front stoop, and their kid is now paying the price at school, and wanna get him out of there. That was really the only hypothetical that, that would concern me. But other than that, I don't know, I don't think there's a lot of support for it.
That's gonna come up a little later on.
Yes, it is.
It'll come up in the debate. Would it be appropriate to, you know, hold the debate until Adam comes up?
Yes.
Yeah, the concerns, you know, class size and the cost of the town, et cetera. And then we had a brief discussion on the Common Core, and some of the concerns that the members had were, there were a couple people had issue with federal or state influence over the curriculum, and the cost of PAC testing. I spoke with Claudia about that. Apparently, the PAC and the MCAS are approximately the same in cost, but are there not more times a PAC test is given than an MCAS test?
Well, I think some of that information came out of the form.
Yeah. So, those were the only issues that the PTO had on that.
Capital budget?
All things are cleared and set for the upcoming town meeting is on the front.
All right, I have a question about the warrant, and do you want me to bring it up under the budget, or do you want me to bring it up now? About the warrant article?
Just send it all together then.
Oh, okay. So, you want me to wait till later? Okay.
Please.
So, and building maintenance is, building and safety.
We actually had a meeting. I met with Claudia, we did a walk around the building. I found, I focused really on safety, student safety, and some issues that I found involved, some of the doors are full glass doors, I'd like to see them with reinforced glass, things like that, issues throughout the, throughout the school. I thought it would be a good idea to have some kind of direct contact with the police station, either a portable radio or a direct line over.
I thought we had that.
We do have all the topics that.
On the police frequency?
Yeah, 'cause we just had some work done to a transmitter.
Last, yes, last year, and I don't remember all the details, last year I remember the details. There was a repeater that was put in town, the water department, the police department, and the schools, all can be heard by the police department.
An alternate frequency or the primary, the primary frequency?
Okay. They, they, they can hear, so in the event of an emergency, they can, they can be called. The idea of a PAC button, for instance, came up last year or the year before. Police department, at that point anyway, was not supportive of it, since they didn't really, they would not really be monitoring a that as well as they would the radios.
Yeah, because very often, there are many offices in the station. Yeah, because very often there are many offices in the station, just the dispatcher.
Yep.
And then this was a big one. I suggested that we harden the office. In other words, Lexan across the front and a steel door in front. As a retreat point for the staff in the event of androids in. So they could get that call out if, God forbid, it ever came up. And the final thing we talked about was the possibility of starting a volunteer school security program, which would involve retired police officers or retired security specialists under the supervision of the police department. That's just in the thinking stages right now. I'm going to want to talk to both the police chief and the fire chief before we consider proceeding. So they have a report for you midsummer or something.
Okay. Thank you. Administrative review. There has been no meeting. Union Thirty-One, there will be a joint meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, at six thirty P.M. In the large group room in the high school, which is where we met the last time we had a joint meeting. And the main topics of conversation will be interviewing applicants for assistant superintendent, special education director, and bids for next year. And we will be doing the interviews and the nominations should be ready at that point. So at this point, Derek, this is your last meeting with us. You are a member of Union Thirty-One. By the time this meeting happens, we are going to have to count on our alternate, Mr. Slager,
Very well.
to be part of this. I would encourage all three of our members to be at the meeting. This is one of the most important things we do as a school committee, is to hold these interviews and nominations and have these votes, so it's... At this point, I know that we've all agreed to be there, but just keep in mind that it is important, so... And to have a quorum on both sides of the table so we can actually have the meeting.
That was a plus.
It is. Administration, principals' report.
Thank you. Our current enrollment is five hundred and sixty-two students. That's kindergarten for grades six. Coming up are kindergarten screenings that will be held on May twenty-seventh. And our kindergarten registrations were held on April fifteenth. Currently, we have eighty students that are formally enrolled in kindergarten for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
Eighty?
Eighty.
Oh, that's for this year, though, not for next year.
For next year.
Oh.
Fifteen, sixteen. Believe it or not, our MCAS math testing will begin next week, on May eleventh, in grade five. I know that all of the teachers in grades three through six have been really preparing their students for this task, along with our session two math tutoring. We really look forward to having some positive results. Certainly, our efforts that have been put forth by our students and the teachers have really been tremendous, so we look forward to the results of those tasks. We've had some events in the past and some coming up, so I'd like to share some of those with you. We had our Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader last Friday, May first. Grade fifth, that's held by the PTO every year, a wonderful educational event. It was quite a success for all students and parents alike, and truly a fun night was held for all. Very educational, and I learned that I'm not smarter than a grown-up. Poetry team was held in this is the boys' first grade classroom on April seventeenth. Another great event, parents come in and listen to the students as they recite their poetry while having tea. So the students were very excited, parents were very excited, and the students did a phenomenal job reading their poetry. We had a math program for grades three through six last week on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, called Horricanaticles. It's a program that we brought back from last year that the PTO sponsored. It's an interactive math game show. It involves all the children in the learning process, where they're able to get down, go on a stage, and participate in some math games, but also perform some theatrics while they're doing it, so... Highly interesting, very fast-paced, and very enjoyable for all. We have, believe it or not, our Turkey Trap tomorrow, which has been postponed more times than I can possibly value. Let's hope that no one, the weather holds out tomorrow. It's a great event, and we're certainly looking forward to the students being able to participate in the run, jog, or walk across the track. So certainly, you know, we're looking forward to that tomorrow morning and hoping that the weather will hold out for us. We began our student placement for the fifteen, sixteen school year. Faculty has all been working on, you know, collecting all of those books that will be moving forward next year. We're scheduling meetings currently for all of those placement teams. Those placement teams consist of our special education teachers, our regular education teachers, our school psychologists, our adjustment counselor, speech pathologist, along with Mr. Bowdre and myself, to begin the formal process of placing students for next year. It's very long, it's very involved, but we want to make sure we get it ready. Our staff appreciation, sponsored by the PTO, will be held this Friday. Great event, again, teachers enjoy lunch and breakfast, and great raffle prizes that are donated by local businesses. And I know the staff is extremely grateful for this wonderful event, so we truly thank our teachers and our staff for the great work that they do every day. Some dates that are coming up. We distribute our progress reports on Wednesday, which is the last progress report of the year. Our staff appreciation, as I had mentioned, will be held on Friday, May eighth. Along with that evening, we're having our Nancy Chapman Memorial Basketball Game that has also been rescheduled, and that will be from five to eight P.M. in the gym. MCAS testing will be held May eleventh through the twenty-second, along with eighteen through the twenty-second, oh, the eighteen, May eleventh through the twenty-second. If you want a exact schedule of all game test testing, please check the website. Memorial Day is Monday, May twenty-fifth, and the school will be closed that day. And Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, we're holding our kindergarten screening. I'd also like to present to the school committee this evening a copy of an amended parent student handbook for your review. While I realize that we certainly were not able to review this all this evening, I would hope that you would take a look at it over the next several weeks. Get back to me if you need any clarification or if you have any questions. There's one other piece that will be added to it that I did include in your packet that I would send out to you. And it applies to the bullying prevention and intervention plan. And what it is, is a list of definitions that will be added to that. For example, the definitions are aggressor, bullying, cyberbullying, what a hostile environment is, what a target is, the definition of retaliation, and the school staff. All of that will be included in our packet, and I'll send that to you electronically. And that's all I have.
All right, are there any questions?
Everything, I'm sorry.
I just had a question about the Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? Were there any noteworthy embarrassing moments?
Other than them calling me Judge Judy? That's all I'll comment on. No, it was a real fun. I know some of the parents were definitely embarrassed by some of the skits that they had to perform. But again, it was a great evening, and certainly everyone enjoyed it.
You know, I ask you this reference time every year, but would you please explain some of the process for the kindergarten process to pointing teachers, yes, screening the selection of teachers, the students, et cetera, et cetera?
For kindergarten?
Yes.
For kindergarten, the screening process happens on May twenty-seventh, and the students will be invited to come in. We have held it, hold it in the all-purpose room. And in the all-purpose room, we'll have all of our teachers there and some of our special ed staff. They will be providing a short series of questions that the students will have to answer. The teachers report back as to what those answers are. What we're looking for is to determine whether or not there are any children who are coming into the school who have special needs services that we need to look at. But it's very quick and easy and painless. You're welcome.
I think that the folks watching you home would like probably the entrance.
Sure.
For any parents who may not be aware of the process, the changes in the handbook are all designated in red. What was the procedure that went into making these changes?
Sure, the school council has met on several occasions to review the student handbook and to make recommendations as to some of the changes that they would like to see in place. So all of these recommendations were put in place through meetings through the school council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, assistant superintendent.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that we'll be able to offer Title One Summer School again this year. We are doing the MCAS prep camp that's being sponsored by Title One. We ran the ELA, and we're, I think, finishing up with the math also, and that's funded through the Title One grant. Title One Summer School will run July seventh through July twenty-third, Tuesday through Thursday, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. I believe the invitations went home today. The invitations went home today. There is no transportation provided, but there is no cost for our students to attend the camp. Students in grade, currently in grades K through five, would be attending Title One Summer Camp here. Students in grade six going up to the middle school are actually invited by attending the middle school Title One Summer Camp. So it's actually a nice opportunity for them to meet some of the middle school staff and also to get to know the building. So it's a nice transition for them. So there's, just went out today. The other thing that I have is a fairly lengthy document, and it's called a year-end review. And this is something that I started doing when I started, and it's highlighting all the different activities that go on in all the different districts. There are three, as you know, three standalone K-six systems, and what happens in Halifax, you don't always know what happens in Kingston and what happens in Dennett, and/or what happens in the region. So this is an opportunity to learn a little bit about all the different things and all the wonderful opportunities that are happening throughout the district. I'm not going to read through everything, but I did just at least want to touch on some highlights. A big part of the activities that all of us have participated in this year is the model evaluation process. That's our new evaluation process. It's our second full year of using it. We use a program called Teach Point, which is an online program. The teachers upload their evidence to support their goals. The administrators do their observations online. The teachers get an email when the forms are completed to let them know they're ready. All of our summative evaluations, everything is done through this program online. It's been a good program for us, and we are planning on using it again next year. We also established this year a working group, and that is part of the contract, and the working group was thirteen or so teachers participated, and we've had administrators. We had four meetings throughout the year to work out some of the kinks. It's a very complex process. So we've worked together to try to make sure we all have the same understandings and expectations. And I want to thank the teachers that participated. From Halifax, it was Marlene Ebert, Steve Oisi, and
Gail.
and Gail Belcher. Thank you. I knew there was a third person. I was trying to remember which group I was in. Participated to represent Halifax. District determined measures, which are part of the model evaluation process. Those are some required assessments that the teachers have been working on throughout the year. All of the teachers have two different measures that they've been gathering the information on. And we are considering them a work in progress at this point in time. This is really our first full year collecting the data. So we're still looking at the data, looking at, are we making good decisions on the measures that have been implemented at this point in time? We're considering and continuing to work our way through what they mean. In terms of curriculum, we have professional learning communities, department meetings, and to make sure we're continuing to add rigor to the lessons. There's professional development on curriculum provided by our new K-six curriculum coordinator, Melissa Farrell, who, by the way, I've invited to do the June meetings, so she can give you a summary of the work she's done throughout the year. This is sort of a broad overview of everyone, but she's going to come specifically to the elementaries. You met her in the fall, and she can tell you a little bit more about some of the trouble she's managed to get into earlier, which has been wonderful. On the secondary level, the ELA coordinator, Jamie Vatonas, our science coordinator, Scott Farrell, and the math coordinator, Kevin Sawyer. We worked on a lot in the elementary level on improving student writing, and we're currently reviewing the new science curriculum materials, and Melissa will tell you a little bit more about that. In terms of technology, we're in our first year of a one-to-one pilot program for grade nine students using Google Chromebooks. We have Gmail and Google Docs, which are used for students and staff. We're using Google Classroom in many of our classrooms. We have our tech plans that have been updated for all the districts. We have Nutri Kids in all of our districts now. Blackboard Connect. We use School Spring for advertising. And we're continuing to do ongoing work in updating our infrastructure and technology. In terms of PD, we have graduate courses. We have two different courses that are being offered this summer. We've had a lot of teachers attend workshops. Very popular one is one held at Bridgewater called MACS. It's a Math and Computer Science Initiative. Over forty teachers attend that every year. Melissa Farrell, our K-six curriculum coordinator, has been doing a tremendous amount of training on the crisis prevention training, which is a de-escalation strategy, working with our students. She's trained, I've lost track, probably between forty to sixty teachers at this point. So she's been, that's been a wonderful addition for us. We've done, had some great professional development days, doing some work on our district determined measures, the writing program and training with the Hawkins, department meetings, integrated use of technology in the classroom. We had one of our days, the teachers did sort of a picking the activities that they wanted to attend to, all of the technology, that went very well. We've had some training for power professionals and secondary area special ed staff and counselors focused on social skills training. We also added two half-professional days this year, and those were very successful. And we will be continuing them next year. Administratively, we meet monthly and try to work our way through everything that needs to get done. We have a wellness advisory committee that meets four times a year. Educational leaders, we have thirteen of them on the K-six span, and they've been very helpful to us. They're sort of the conduit to provide information to the teachers. And there's a small stipend paid through the Teacher Quality Grant, and they receive PDPs. Transition activities, we have a Silver Lake Strong program, which works for all our grades nine through twelve for all four years. We have National Honor Society provides tutors every week after school in late classes to assist with academics. And we have step-up dates for all of our transitions. From sixth grade into seventh, eighth grade into ninth, we have a freshman forum. And then for kindergarten, we obviously have all the activities Mrs. Motta mentioned. On the mentor project program, we have thirty-five new staff members, and one administrator participated. We have a large number of new teachers this year throughout our districts. It's interesting because next year, there appears to be almost no retirements throughout the district, so it's interesting how the pendulum swings. We've had regular meetings throughout the years. As a matter of fact, we just had one on licensure this afternoon. The retail initiative, this is huge. The Department of Education was cited by the Department of Justice, Massachusetts was cited by the Department of Justice, that we were not adequately servicing our English as a Second Language students. So because of that, we are required to have all of our teachers who have an English as a Second Language student in their classroom take a three-credit graduate course, a sheltered English immersion course. And it is very involved. All of our administrators have to take it. Mrs. Motta and Mr. Bowdre took it. And any teacher who currently has an ELL student in the classroom must take it. It's a tremendous amount of paperwork at this point. We have to meet the same criteria as Boston, as any others, you know, Brockton, any town that has ELL students, even though between all four districts, at any given point in time, we have between five and twelve students who meet the criteria, but we have to meet the same standard, so... So it is a, it is a large initiative and it's important that we keep track of it. But it is very involved for anyone who's taking the courses. Building Safety and Security, we reviewed our emergency protocols for each building. We have monthly meetings with a community of concern, which are all our local police departments. And we updated our memorandum of understanding. Terms of policy, we had several policies that were updated and reviewed. Background checks, Model Four A policy, bidding requirements, domestic violence leave, student absence, student discipline, student conduct. We're having a coordinated program review. And all four state, all four districts are in the first stage of that. This year they have a web-based monitoring system. And the first part of it is civil rights and special education. And next year, the Department of Education will continue the audit and they'll be reviewing our career and technical program, our English Language Lerner program, Title I, and a file review of special education. Okay, and the academic and civic accomplishments. So every year I try to make sure we at least give a highlight and touch on some of the great things that happen in each school. So in Halifax, students raised three thousand three hundred and forty dollars for the new Hops playground. They contributed close to a thousand dollars worth of canned goods for the Halifax Food Pantry. And they will be participating in the Nancy Chapman Basketball Fundraiser coming up. Kingston Intermediate students raised six thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars for pennies for patients. Grades three and four did a Cancer-Acause Food Drive and they donated over fourteen hundred dollars in food items to the pantry. And their student council is holding a May Day Food Drive. Kingston Intermediate School started an official student council this year. They've been very excited and having a wonderful time with it. It's grade six students, fifth and sixth students, excuse me. So it was implemented, they held elections, they nominated a new mascot. There's now a KIS eagle, so they're all buying clothing with their new mascot on as they're quite pleased with themselves. Two Plimpton grade six students raised funds for breast cancer awareness. And a fifth and sixth grade Plimpton student will be reading the Gettysburg Address in Flanders Field at the Plimpton Parade for Memorial Day. Two of our middle school students moved on to the History V finals in Louisville, which is quite an honor. So that's pretty exciting. At the Invention Convention, which happens in Bridgewater, we had a portable solar powered charger, which won third place. And Safe Cuff won best use of technology. The artistic endeavors included two plays at the middle school, Alice in Wonderland and Into the Woods. Concerts and a summer musical program, production of Pirates of the Caribbean, which is the Caribbean, that is not a typo. The art gallery, let's see, the Silver Lake Middle School, we worked very hard to have an art club at the middle school. And there's been one, two years in the making and they're having an art show. And it will be, the young artists will be on display in the Kingston Library throughout the month of May. And four students had their art published in a book, celebrating art. They ran the holiday head start party for local families, created three hundred holiday cards for students overseas, donated gifts to over a hundred local families, raised over seven thousand for Cradles to Crayons for students living in homeless or low-income households, contributed over a thousand food items in November, over two hundred and fifty coats donated to the Coke Drive, and over eight hundred items for the crayons to Cradles to Crayons, I'm sorry, I know I'm saying that backwards. Spring of the Eating CTC is just too hard to remember. And over sixty Christmas stock evenings were donated to soldiers. The high school made the Advanced Placement School of Distinction, which is awarded to the only the top ten percent of schools. Seventy-seven seniors were awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. And approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in scholarships will be distributed. The student council won the Gold Council of Excellence Award. It's the highest award a student council can earn, as well as Top Ten Project Award, which is teacher karaoke, which is a lot of fun to watch. The Carpentry Vocational Program built a two-bay storage and work garage for Kingston Elementary School. In addition to a residential deck in Kingston, a new roof on the water department building in Halifax here. And replaced the metal railings for the walkways around the Reed Building in Kingston. The county art students took first place in the Tenth Annual People's Choice Chili Cook-Off to benefit the Rachel Souza Memorial Scholarship. They have a trophy about this time, it's pretty cool. Which is given to a Silver Lake graduate. The high school artistic endeavors included two plays, Seventeen Seventy-Six and You Can't Take It With You, numerous seasonal concerts, and performed a Walt Disney World, they performed at Walt Disney World, excuse me. Senior art students presented their portfolios in the senior art showcase. High school students fundraising efforts included Aerie Food Banks and Pantries, Relay for Life, Dana Farber South Shore Hospital, Breast Cancer Center, and Children's Holiday Funds raised enough money to donate three items to every child on their list. Eighty-nine percent of the high school students participate in after-school activities. That is an amazing number, eighty-nine percent. And I apologize, that last item should not be there though, it was from last year. Shouldn't cross it off that middle school one. You don't see that, it ends at P. Sorry about that, wrong copy, printed out. So as you can see, there's lots to be proud of.
If I may ask, do our students ever have time to just do the alternate?
A little bit.
And just because I find this interesting, I'm going to share with you when the water department that we are putting the roof on, the bulk of this building was originally built by Silver Lake vocational students back in the day. We don't, we don't do plumbing, we don't do electrical work, we don't do, or concrete. Original buildings, construction of original buildings, built by CT program back in the day.
I did not know that.
I didn't know it either, actually, I was told by one of the CT instructors. I said, "It's nice what you're doing and it's all right, we built it the first time." I said, "Oh, okay, good to know."
So we come back and do repairs? Thank you. Superintendent of Schools, I know you're just going to give it over to Christine.
I'm going to do the monthly financial report and then I'll look at the rest of the items.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Once again, you will have our yellow financial plan tonight. We're in the very last quarter of the year. There have been a couple of issues that have impacted the overall management of the school department. Whether it's known for the biggest obstacles in addition to the short volume of special education account without tuition account. I'll start at page one of the detail. The first account we've talked about this before is the work of the salary for the charter business. The person actually doesn't admit it, takes, takes the minutes and repairs the minutes when needed. We have a deficit there, we're expecting that to grow to between seven and eight hundred dollars. And I know for next year, we haven't used the budget for that, knowing that this is happening. The next area of deficits happened on page four, there's our utility, utility accounts. As you know, we had this very cold winter and we've got some deficits in both our electric account and our gas account. Hopefully we'll turn the corner on that. The town is actually having, at their town meeting, they're proposing that set four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars be transferred to our budget to account for some of those overages in the utility accounts. Expect that to happen. Then the last area of concern is our special education area. The biggest issue was our out-of-district tuition account. That deficit there that you see does not reflect the circuit breaking one that is committed. The deficit, the final deficit we expect to absorb by our out-of-district tuition account of special education, as well as our out-of-district vocational account. Between the two of those, they will take care of that. Although one account I did forget to mention is just up above is the Contrafer Services account. That deficit is now twenty-five thousand dollars going to the end of the year. That had been higher, in the forty thousand dollar range. But we continue to revisit that to see if there's been some changes in programs and what do we actually need to get to the end of the year. And this is the most up-to-date account we're going to expect to be for the end of the year. And also just about that account, we do have a deficit in supplies and materials for psychological testing. Those are the testing materials that were needed to get to the end of the year. We could wait until next year and take care of that. And then on the very last page of our budget is the out-of-district vocational account. We previously had a surplus that exceeded a hundred thousand dollars, but the town was able to use some of that money at the special town meeting to take care of a few items that were going on this year. But we're still expecting a surplus of sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, which we'll use to offset the special education out-of-district tuition deficit. Any questions?
Is the town's okay with us doing that?
We have done that in the past, but they're within our accounts that we oversee. And they are aware.
Okay. I guess that was more my question is that as we go to special town meeting and they're looking to transfer money around, are we keeping in mind? And is the town aware of the debts that we have in the out-of-district special education?
They are aware of the deficits there, yes. And what we do at the end of the meeting would make that final change as they hold their selectmen's meeting. And we all transfer exactly what we need to bring it to a zero.
Okay. And we're not going to know that until we go to do the closeouts for us?
Correct, and it just, anything could happen, even though I know it's late in the year, early tenth month, eleventh month of the year. A place we could change.
I know we got a surprise last year, so then that's why I'm
Yeah, we use estimates and we try to have every student in their current placement and react when there's a change.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, so a couple of things, this is mostly reasonably short, but, but things you need to know about. If we look at next year's budget, the fifteen sixteen budget, we've, we've recently come to realize that there may be, maybe, an additional out-of-district vocational request. The issue comes about in that we received a request well after the end date, the end date being April first. It was actually received in our office on the twenty-ninth of, of April. Now this is a question as to whether the town wants to go forward with it or not. And two that end up referred it to Charlie to see if the town has a policy of whether it will accept late, late entrance or not. I have, personally think, I have no issue in suggesting that it's, it's missed the deadline by a whole lot and therefore turning it down. But nonetheless, it's, it's to a large extent not our money, it's the town's money. So we'll let the town weigh in, they may or may not have a policy on that.
Does the school committee have a policy on this?
Does not.
Not that I'm aware of.
Would we like to make one? Does it carry any weight?
I don't know. Where did the April first deadline come from? Do we know?
Yeah. If you have a written for a second, it comes from the Department of Education Regulations dealing with, dealing with out-of-district vocational programs. And if you look at the actual form, it says the sending district should be notified by April first of an out-of-district, of a request from out-of-district.
And if they're not, does it specify who has the authority to make that decision?
It certainly doesn't exclude a town from being more generous, but it doesn't require a town to be more generous.
I'd like to make a motion. That's all right, to adopt a new school policy that says anyone who the legal phrasing on this may not be correct, but to adopt the policy that any out-of-district students who missed the April first deadline are not eligible for enrollment in Halifax Elementary School.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I have a comment. Well, we are certainly in charge of putting together a budget. I think when it comes to matters like this, I think a discussion with the town administrator and the selectmen is not out of order. As, you know, this will affect how things happen in future. And if we have that policy in place, it's going to be very hard for us as a committee, and not only that, the finance committee, to put together a budget to recommend a town meeting.
Would you like to amend it to say that?
It's just, I don't want to jump into things too fast, too far.
But I also don't want to give up any authority over this type of question necessarily to the town. I understand it's the town's money, but it's our students. I'm personally not in favor of allowing people to miss the deadline, especially by that amount. We worked very diligently to come up with a budget, and so it's
I agree with that. And at, at the same time, you know, I, I just don't want to rush into something and, and have this policy put in place without, first of all, without notifying the public we're going to have this discussion because this wasn't really on the agenda.
Can I place this on the agenda for our adjournment?
Absolutely.
Any reason why withdraw my motion?
Will you withdraw, okay.
Casey, say it one more time, with as far as the budget goes.
If we have a policy in place, all right, and I guess it goes back to, I know of an instance where this has happened in the past and the student has been allowed to attend. So it, it, if we start talking about having a policy, first of all, I think we should give the public enough notice that we're going to have these discussions because this is a change
Agreed.
from past practice. Not from what the deadline is, but from what has happened in the past. And it's up to town meeting to make these decisions, you know, we can only put forward what we're going to do. And the selectmen have a right to put forward what they're going to. But if we start changing things midstream, and town meeting's Monday night, it's Monday night. So if we're going to change it to say that they can go or they can't go or, and that's what I'm afraid of. I'm afraid that, you know, if we start playing with things now, it's going to make it more difficult in the future.
My concern though is that if we pass a budget and then we have to find money for those students?
Right, I understand that. And there's a lot of factors in here that I'm struggling with right now at this meeting because it's too fast, honestly. I'd like to be able to think about it, to look into it. And a policy is a policy, you know, and it's something that we shouldn't take lightly because it's, it's more than just saying, okay, we're really going to hold to that cutoff date. It's
So who, who will ultimately make the decision on this particular, in this particular case? Who has the authority to make this decision?
Actually, if I could, actually, it's superintendent, it's superintendent who's asked to sign off on this, on this, on this form. We, we have sort of a unique, in my view, we have sort of a unique situation when it comes to out-of-district vocational placements. It's under the supervision of the school committee, I mean, there's no question about that. We get the attendance reports, we get the, my office gets the Chapter Seventy-four Non-Resident Vocational Tuition Form. That information I talked about is part of the instructions on the back of the form. But because of the way it's funded here in, in Halifax, it's not directly coming from your budget. It's not competing with, with textbooks or, or teachers here at Halifax Elementary. It's frankly competing for that greater pot of money for the, for the town's entire budget. And so it's almost as if it is the town's responsibility, and I think that's the way they view it, because it doesn't come from our budget directly, but it's under your, it's under your jurisdiction, it's under your direction. You know, we ensure that it's, that it's an appropriate placement. We ensure that it's a program that we do not have at Silver Lake, so, so it is, it is a program that, that they would be otherwise eligible to go to. We, we arrange the transportation, we pay the bills, and we monitor their attendance. So it's, it's, it's a, it's not complicated, it's a unique, not even unique, it's a relationship that happens in other towns. My, my feeling is that the instructions on the back of the application sort of say that, that you need to apply by April first or you're not entitled. Using the word entitled, you're not required to provide it. So really comes to question, does an exception want to be made? I'm not sure you need to pass a policy that says we will enforce what are the instructions for out-of-district vocational placements. It really comes to you want to ever deal with, with exceptions, and this would certainly be unacceptable.
When, when does the application period begin?
As a practical matter, it's, it starts right after, usually right after the, the December holidays. People started to think in January about where they're going to go. If you were looking, in fact, if you were looking to do this as a, as a post-secondary program, somebody that's already graduated from high school and perhaps wants to go back, unusual situation when it happens. You need to file this post-secondary, you need to file this non-resident application because this is for people who are going to a school that's not where they live by February first. So it's a, it's a long period of time.
All right, let me see if I understand this. You just said that people who have graduated from high school can apply to a vocational school?
They can.
Okay, that's a new one, I didn't know that.
It is, it is unusual, it tends not to happen, it tends not to be accepted.
Okay.
I think the more, I, I think the, I think the more normal course where that happens is somebody who, who is somewhat beyond the normal graduation age, but is just one or two courses short.
In this particular case, I know you can't give me the details, but are there any extraneous circumstances?
Not that I'm aware of.
See, I have a real problem with this, a deadline to deadline. Just have to say, you know, I mean, they were forewarned and you're talking about a month later?
Correct.
And I understand that the, the correlation between our budget and the town budget, but town meeting holders don't always see it that way.
I guess I, I guess I missed that, this isn't like actually happening right now, that somebody applied. I thought we were just having a general discussion.
Oh, no, no, this is a very specific
Oh. Oh, he said there was an applicant.
On the twenty ninth of, of April.
Missed that part.
On the twenty ninth, the application was received on April twenty ninth, and that is well beyond the April first date that's mentioned in the instructions.
And, and what's it, what's the price tag associated with this?
Twenty seven thousand dollars, plus or minus.
Did they give an explanation for the late filing?
And that's why I was making a motion to actually adopt the policy.
Gotcha.
Casey has a good point, that perhaps we should give advance loans to the public to get their input on this, and maybe have a hearing if that's prudent. But in this particular case, I think perhaps we could get a sense of the board on this individual case without creating a policy.
When do you have to give the, because you have the ultimate say, correct? So when do you have to respond? And what happens if you say no? Is that student staying there currently?
Well, in.
Does his work, they can direct.
In the one other ca- in the one other case that I'm aware of happening, Casey mentioned it. The parent who was un, who was unhappy with the fact that it was turned down at my office, appealed that decision to the board of selectmen, since it were going to the board of selectmen for funding. It wasn't coming out of, out of your budget here. So that's the brief history that I'm aware of.
And the circumstances were similar in that the reason was denied was because they missed the deadline, or were there other circumstances involved?
It was, it was denied because it would be on the deadline. I, frankly, I don't remember much more about it, I mean, this happened.
You don't remember how that was resolved ultimately?
It was a long time ago.
It was a real long time ago.
It was before I was on the committee.
So like a hundred years ago?
Not a hundred years ago. Hey, I've only been here for seven years.
A decade, I think it would probably be, be safe to say it was a decade ago. Well, I can longer.
It, it's been a while.
I, I actually, so I'm the only one in this room who remembers it, and that's okay.
So the student stays in that part?
It would stay, it would stay at Silverling.
Okay.
I, I just have an issue with somebody missing a deadline by a month.
I agree with that.
And now we're talking about twenty seven thousand dollars coming out of the town side of the budget that they're not expecting. I mean, everyone, you know, I attended FinCom meetings, everyone's worked really hard to try to get this budget as tight as possible. And so we have to make an exception, if there was extraneous, strenuous circumstances, certainly to consider, but if they just miss a deadline by a month? I'm sorry, I'm just not that sympathetic.
Even the deadline for the preschools in February, you have to pay for that.
All right, so that.
John, can I ask you another question? I know the decision is ultimately yours, but are we in a position as a board to direct you on this very specific case?
I'm always interested in what the board has to say.
But ultimately, it's still to you.
That is my understanding.
I'm not, I'm not big on symbolic votes, okay, I want to know if there's some practical application to it, so.
I, I, well, you, I work for, I work for the board, the board doesn't work for me. I think it'd be safe to say a practical application is certainly less than symbolic if, if, if the board has an opinion. I mean, unless it's a violation of law.
Or advising consent.
I'm interested in instruction.
Has the town, has the town said anything in relation to this? Are they aware of?
I just, the other day, wrote a term, this is second.
It's like talking about right now.
They came, we'll be talking about it.
Yes, probably.
If there's any indication of what they, being that it's town's money and it's coming out of town's coffers and such, I would really like to have a feeling of what the town itself would feel about it. I'm not, I'm in the same mode as Roger. I professionally, I miss a deadline, I end up having to pay sixty dollars to get my license back, but that's just where I live. This is not something we can really reward, but at the same time, being that we're not, we're, we'd be playing with somebody else's money on this, it's probably something that I want to hear from the other side of the street on.
Unfortunately, town meeting starts on Monday, and we don't meet again until, so we couldn't take action on it, to be honest, right?
No, but going forward, we could set the policy.
I know, although we're talking about setting the policy, I'm still dealing with this one particular situation.
We will be posted, I would suggest to you that you will be posted as a committee during town meeting and have the ability to meet and, and make a decision. If you're there.
And we have to have a quorum of the committee to meet, so that means at least three.
So is there, is there theoretically, could, could another student theoretically apply for out, out of district vote at this point? Could this go on into June and July?
There is nothing that prevents somebody from, from applying.
But they're, they're still past the deadline, so this.
They just get further past the deadline.
So there are two things.
Well, it's a deadline.
Well, and, and that's part of where he's struggling.
Right.
Well, I don't think he's struggling, I don't think they're struggling, no, I don't think you're struggling, I'm sorry.
I'm not particularly struggling, and in fact, I'd welcome the committee to make this easy for me. So I, so I get a phone call, I get to say tell it to the, tell it to the committee.
Thanks.
But just to be clear, there are situations when we get past people making this application, if somebody is already enrolled in, in what we would consider an out of district vocational program, and they move from the town that they currently reside in to Halifax at any point after, after July first, the next fiscal year, you now automatically have some financial responsibility. There's no application process in that case.
Well, yeah, there was, it was just somewhere else.
Well, yeah, it's true.
Well, see, that I think would qualify as like.
Yeah.
Circumstances beyond.
Yeah, I, I guess.
With that, I can understand, I can be sympathetic with that, your parents move, your parents move.
I guess I just wanted to make it clear.
Yeah, the student has no control over that.
I guess I just want to make it clear that you're not out of the wood, so to speak.
Right.
Once, once we get past, past that application period and, and the clocks tick by.
Casey, can you post a meeting for next Monday at town meeting as well, so if we want to discuss this and take a vote?
My plan was to vote, to vote, to post meetings for every night of town meeting, just in case. Because you never know what's coming.
Do we, do we?
Every night, well, I, I, I see, I heard a rumor that the all-purpose room is reserved from the eleventh through the fourteenth. So we will be posted for the first night of town meeting and for any other nights that we adjourn to. So I'm hoping we don't have four nights of town meeting again this year, but that's what.
You're saying it's going to go Monday and then be delayed? I, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I was clear what you just said. Will they move it to the gym?
No, they would just adjourn to another night if we don't finish Monday night. Like we did last year, we adjourned, we didn't finish Monday, we adjourned to Tuesday, we adjourned to another day.
I thought you were saying that, that the, the room wasn't available.
No, the all-purpose room has been reserved.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I thought you were saying that somebody else had reserved it after Monday, okay.
No, the all-purpose room has, is reserved by the town from the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth.
So if we post a meeting, do we have to have an agenda that would allow us to vote on this particular issue?
We would post an agenda that's.
You would post an agenda, and, and I think that, that since it's related to town meetings, it's directly related to the budget, it's understood that you'd be dealing with matters that are going to come before town meeting related to the budget. You actually voted on a district vocational budget, certainly seems to be related to what's directly coming to the fourth town meeting. Because, in fact, if you want, if, if the decision is that this is going to be funded, you're going to be asked to vote that number to increase your budget. Just as, just as Casey mentioned before, we need to, we need to actually vote, you, you need to understand that the warrant that's being published, that has been published talks about the, the computer articles, twenty six thousand two hundred.
No, I haven't brought up that yet.
But you had mentioned that there's an issue with it, and so it's some, so we, so, just so you're aware that that's happening as well. So there are always those adjustments that need to be made before town meeting.
Just in case anybody asks how the school committee feels about the, you're going to have to make a potential amendment to the vocational budget. So I would like just to have us on record as voting whether or not we approve of the adjusted vocational number. Okay, and that would be dealing specifically with this case. So maybe we can, if we gain more information between now and the start of town meeting from the FinCom and the Selectmen, and from Charlie, then we'll have a better sense on it, so maybe we could just meet briefly before town meeting to discuss this, if that seems reasonable?
Yeah, do you, how would you feel about meeting briefly with the FinCom before town meeting? Because I'm sure they're going to be, I don't, I mean, I don't speak enough, but I'm assuming that they probably meet before town meeting anyway. I mean, if we steal them for five minutes just to get their opinion on the matter, like that would be a terrible thing.
Seems reasonable to me, sure.
I would like, I'd like to have their input before I could cast a vote in favor or against.
All right, fair enough.
So, town meeting starts at seven thirty, so you want to post for seven?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll be right away.
Okay, so as John alluded to a second ago, the warrant has come out for town meeting. And it is article thirty, and don't forget, we're going to a lottery system this year. So in the town warrant, our article on technology is printed as twenty six thousand two hundred. So we're going to need to stand up and amend that number to the twenty two thousand two hundred. The town is aware of it, that it is a different number than from what we voted at the April meeting. And I'm also wondering if anybody would like to stand up and speak to that article, or if you would like me to do it again.
I'll speak to it.
You'll speak to it? Okay.
Charlie, we'll have motions for you.
Yes.
And I'm not so sure you're going to amend it as much as just, just read a new motion, and I suspect the moderator will point out that it's different from.
That could be.
The amount printed in the, in the, in the law.
And like I did say, we are going to the lottery system, so depending on.
In the Thursday, the last one Thursday.
It could be, yeah, it could be the last one Thursday, it could be the right one, next one right after article four, so it's, it's going to be the luck of the draw.
Just a general question, are we voting on the overall budget before the lottery starts?
Yes.
It seems a little silly to be voting on articles when you don't know what the budget's actually going to be.
Give me a wonderful class project probability. And I understand they have a regular bingo cage.
I, I believe they're using a bingo cage, that's the last I heard.
At the special meeting, they were pulling it out of a fishbowl.
Yes, you call it the jelly jar method.
I've seen the pink bottom ball.
Yeah, but what's sixty? Sixty-three articles, I don't think the jelly jar's going to work. So, all right, so that takes care of what I needed for the budget, do we need anything else on the budget?
No, I think we're done with the budget.
Okay.
But we do need to deal with the school choice vote, and so we, just very quickly, we talked about school choice last month. And we said we'd draw on it this month, and to just review quickly, in Massachusetts, every community is, is assumed to accept school choice students unless you opt out of it. If you do nothing, you will be a district that has to take school choice students in any grade and any number. I need to write to the commissioner, I need to write to the Department of Education by June to tell them that the committee has voted to either put restrictions or not participate. We have never participated, as far as I know, here in Pink, here in, here in Halifax. If we participate, we get a sum of money of, of five thousand dollars per student who, who comes here, and then we get some additional funding if they turn out to be a sped student. When we talked about this originally, we were looking at a first grade that was in the fifties. And in the fifties, I'm sorry, kindergarten, thank you very much, we're looking at, at kindergarten that was in the fifties, and that is now in the eighties. And so I would not suggest at all that we want to take in kindergarteners, just because of class size and the reality that the aides that had been previously paid for in kindergarten was, was to a grant that no longer exists, and so we will not have the, the paraprofessional support at the, at the kindergarten level that we used to have. So then it really raises the question, do we want to take them in, in, in other grades? Once you take a student in, you have the responsibility to, to keep them into the grade span of the schools. You bring somebody in as a kindergarten one, two, three, four, five, they have a right to stay here until grade six. That's their choice, not your choice. And so given, given what we have for class size, and given, frankly, we don't have a lot of, of excess capacity here in the building, my recommendation to the committee is that you vote not to participate in school choice for the fifteen, sixteen school year.
So this will come up each year?
Yes.
Comes up every year.
Every year.
So we get to change our mind?
Yes.
Every year you can change your mind.
Okay, John, can I ask a question?
Sure.
From my recollection, and according to the minutes of our April sixth meeting, you had recommended to start at the kindergarten level. What's changed since then?
You know, I think if that's, if that's what it says and it's not fully accurate, what I should have said was, if we are going to do anything like this, I suggest that we start at the kindergarten level. I think the question was what we were going to have for enrollment. My opinion is, and the conventional wisdom is, that if you're going to bring students in, starting them off in kindergarten with your, with your school, and then having them progressive, in fact, that's what they do, is less disruptive, because they are really part of the, part of the fabric of the school, starting in the kindergarten. To have somebody come in, say, in the fourth, fifth, sixth grade, is somewhat more problematic, because we're not necessarily sure either what the curriculum exactly was, where, where it is, what, either what text they're using, what instructional materials or methods that they've been exposed to, and that one or two students in a classroom that have had, that are in a different place than everybody else can be very disruptive and frankly slow things down for those first, first early weeks of a new school year. So I, if I was less than clear, I apologize, that's what I intended to say, that if you're going to do this, it should really start at kindergarten and have them start with the class and perhaps stay to the end. But we now know we have numbers that really doesn't support the idea of bringing in additional students.
Do you have any idea what percentage of schools in the state are school choice?
I don't, it's, it's available on, it's available on the website, at the DESI website. When you go and look at it, what you will find, what you'll find is that there are some parts of the state where there's a lot of school choice. If you go to Barstool County, which is Cape Cod, you see a lot of school choice. If you look at the numbers, what you see is that there's been a tremendous drop in enrollment in those areas. And so you're looking at schools with, with excess capacity, with the ability to take students in. What you mostly see around here, around, I think, most of the state is, is restrictions, they're looking for three, four, five, six students, and they have openings in grade one or two, or, or, or perhaps K in one, something like that, where they've had some, some years where they did not have lots of students come in. But it's readily available on the state website, you go to the DESI website and just look for school choice. It, it prints what are receiving districts and what are sending districts. Every district in the state can be a sending district, if you, if you take, you don't, every student in the state has an absolute right to go to another school under school choice, as long as they are accepting students.
What's the situation in the first grade right now? I mean, as compared to what it has been. I know we had talked about it in the last meeting, maybe doing a trial run of one or two students to see how that worked out. And I understand that you had mentioned the, the kindergarten numbers. I can't imagine at the first grade level, you're dealing with, I know that John had spoken to wanting to have a student that can progress to the system. I think the difference between kindergarten and first grader isn't that great in terms of still being able to achieve that ultimate goal. So I guess I'll ask you, Claudia, what are your feelings about adding a couple more, potentially adding a couple more students to the first grade?
Well, first grade numbers, as we move from kindergarten into first grade next year, will be about seventy-four. We currently have eighty students right now in first grade. Those numbers typically change over the summer as new families move into town. So it's really hard to predict what those numbers look like. I would have to agree with John, I think that if we are going to start looking and accepting students to become part of the school community, I think it would really be important to start off in kindergarten and in third. And again, the numbers that we currently have in, in first grade are very similar to the numbers that we have in kindergarten. And again, the numbers that we currently have in, in first grade are very similar to the numbers that we have in kindergarten with the expectation that there will be new friends that traditionally moved in over the summer. So, it's really fairly close to what we would expect.
If that first grade, if that kindergarten number was 54 and not 74, absolutely I'd be suggesting that, that we have space and we're looking for some students. But as Claudia suggests, I mean, there are no guarantees in life, but it is not unusual to have some first graders show up. In some cases, they have been, they've already lived in town, they're just not in our kindergarten. Because while kindergarten, it's mandatory that we provide a kindergarten, it is not mandatory that you go to kindergarten. And so, in some cases- Yeah, it's not mandatory. And in some cases, you have parents who, for reasons of daycare as much as anything, find it more convenient to go somewhere else.
We have like alternative schools too, like Montessori and Waldorf, and sometimes parents send their kids there for younger ages and bring them in. My, my only question was, and I'm just asking this out of curiosity. So, if we were a school choice school, and we took in five kindergartners, do we own them till they graduate Silver Lake?
No.
Do they go to now to school?
Just grade 6.
The grade, the grade-
So, then what happens?
The grade span of your school district-
They go back to Santa Fe Plymouth, they go back to Plymouth?
Do they repit for seventh grade or?
Only if Silver Lake is a-
Is it school choice?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
You, you are, you are not a separate school from Silver Lake, you're a separate school district from Silver Lake. So, your school district ends at 6. So, at the end of 6, they now need to go back to their home district or another school that accepts school choice students.
But if you went to Pembroke, for instance, that's not regional, you would own them to high school?
You don't own to high school. That's correct. That's correct.
I guess my concerns going forward with this is knowing that there's three potential housing developments out there for Halifax right now. Two have been approved by the ZBA, and then there's Blackledge Farms that has, is still working through. Not knowing what that means to enrollments here as those build-outs happen. Accepting school choice in kindergarten right now, what does that do to when they're in 4th grade, 5th grade, 6th grade? You know, and, and that's my concern with it.
If we voted school choice now and then next year was hypothetical, and we decided against it, we wouldn't have to add any new students, but we would still be responsible for the students that were approved this year.
Yes. So, once we accept those students, we own them until they choose to leave or they graduate the 6th grade. Yes.
Just out of question, if you took in a student, do you get any income from that town where they're coming from, from the K to 6? Or you get no income at all?
We get $5,000.
Every year?
Yes. And what, what is the cost for a student?
I think it's between 13, wasn't it? Yeah. About 13 a student.
So, it's between 12 and 13,000 dollars, I mean-
What we, we spend as a district.
It's what we spend on-
So, we pick up the 6 or 7?
Basically, we'd be taking an $8,000 every year for every student we add.
Right.
You know, if you have tremendous overcapacity, then really what you're talking about is just dealing with the additional cost of some teaching supplies. If you've got a teacher and space and books and those sorts of things. It is not really designed to be a financial bull.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we opt out of the school choice program.
For 2015, 2016?
For 2000, that Halifax Elementary School District opt out of the school choice program for 2015, 2016 school year.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Present?
Perfect. I think everybody has, I would say the yellow sheet, but they're all yellow sheets.
Except for the ones that are- The meeting schedule?
The meeting schedule. So, very quickly, this assumes that we will have, continue with meetings on the first Monday of the month. The only exception here is in September, where it turns out the first Monday of the month is Labor Day. And-
The second Monday is Kickster.
So, and when, and when Monday's a holiday, we traditionally had the meeting on Tuesday. And that would also be the first night of school, or the first day of school. You look at Monday, July 6th, is the tentative meeting. I'm going to tell you, we will not be prepared to meet on Monday, July 6, 2015. That would be our close-up meeting. If you look at the calendar, Friday is a holiday, which is the 3rd. The 1st and 2nd would be the only two workdays of the new fiscal year. We would not have received all the bills, would not be prepared to, to close out at that, at that point in time. In talking to Christine, the suggestion is that we, that we meet hopefully on, on Thursday, July 9. That assumes that Silver Lake will move their meeting from the 9th to the 16th.
I'm not, I'm just, I-
It's just, it's just a whole lot of moving parts to get everything done. So, so we have a little more flexibility-
We can cancel the meeting.
We have a little more-
We have to close out meeting.
We have a little more flexibility at Silver Lake in terms of when we have to close out all our books. But the towns, because we're a department of the towns, they need our warrants and so that they can enter all of that information by July 15. And because this year, school is running so late, the week before, the week where July starts, we will still have school, which means we still have payrolls going on, and we still will have to, have to figure out what, what that's going to mean and encumber those sums of money. And of course, we're waiting for the normal stuff like utility bills to show up, so we can encumber those sums of money. So, I'm giving you a calendar, and I'm going to suggest that we will meet July 8, which is Wednesday, or July 9, which is Thursday. I prefer Thursday, it just gives us an additional day to get some work done in what is a pretty compressed timeframe, because we have to do this for four different budgets. We will be closing out on the next Monday, which we'll do in Kingston and Silver Lake that weekend. We still have to get Puntin' done in there as well. So, I'm not asking you to vote the meeting schedule tonight. I'm going to leave this with you, and next month, we're going to see about, about when we can hold the June-
The July sort of?
The July meeting. When Silver, once Silver Lake decides, can we, can I get sort of a sense as to whether Thursday, the 9th, we vote for people? Derek, you don't have to answer. I mean, we're interested if you can come, but frankly, I don't think you're going to bother.
Are you going to be here?
I, I will not.
What's your line?
June?
June?
June, yeah. June 30th is, I'm done.
I'm pretty excited about that.
So-
You're going to have to give me your home phone number before you leave.
It's in the book.
Take it in the wrapping.
Yeah.
It's in the book.
So, what does, what works for everybody? Because obviously, I've already got the 9th as a date that I'm planning on having a meeting. So, it makes no difference to me. What is the committee's pleasure? Mr. Slager?
It seems fine right now, but could, could we solidify this next, next month?
We are, but we can't solidify it. He's asking which works better for us.
Yeah, I, I guess as an individual, I can't, I don't know yet personally, but I'd certainly adhere to whatever's best for the administration board, so.
Okay. Would you prefer the Thursday?
Yeah. Talking about Thursdays. And I want to know if we're getting August off again this year.
That's, I don't know why you're looking to this side. That's a committee decision that we make, and it's based upon-
I guess we play it by ear.
Yeah, we do play it by ear. In case anything does happen, I can tell you that I've, I've left it up to administration in the past to say, okay, if there's, if there's nothing important we need to meet about, we can cancel the meeting.
My brother tells me I need to get a DVR machine.
They're a wonderful thing to have, I will tell you. Although you have to, if you're a baseball fan, you have, some people don't tell you what happened.
Oh, yes.
Oh, my husband's not good at golf.
Or any sports fan.
My coach.
My coach.
Okay.
Two other, two, and, and, and actually, in that whole vein of just what we went through, it says Monday, July 5th is the tentative date for 2016, not going to happen. But, but you'll deal with that in a year.
Thanks for the heads up.
Two other things, very quickly. You may remember last month that I asked you to vote on a statement of interest
Yes.
for the Mass School Building Authority for Blue Project. I can only tell you that, that the Selectman also voted on that. They signed it, you signed it, or the chair signed it. It was submitted in time, and it'll be a period of time before the act-
Is there a deadline for that?
There was a deadline for it. There was a deadline. It was submitted in time. All the signatures in place, and so, it'll be a while before MSBA goes through making a decision. And then the final thing. We were talking about how you spell parks, and, and I'm going to talk about a park forum. The state, the Board of Education is holding five different forums around the state. They've already held one, and that was at Fitchburg State in August. On June 10th, which is a Wednesday, there's going to be a forum at Bridgewater State University from 4 to 7 to talk about whether they're going to do away with MCAS as the state's assessment system and move on to PARK as the state's assessment system. And if you feel passionate about it, or just interested about it, you can, you can go. If you're interested in speaking, they want you to register in advance, and they will allot you three minutes to give me, give me your remarks.
Ma'am, do I have to practice my speech?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Clear and concise, please.
Clear and concise. Good way to put it. Okay.
Do you want to explain with just nice bright green packets?
Oh. So, you may remember at the last-
As long as you give it back.
You may remember at the last joint meeting, you voted to change the composition of the Admin Review Committee.
No, just to wait for the elected chair.
Or I should say the chair, how the chair is elected. It used to be, it had to rotate back and forth between the union and the region, and for a number of reasons. Not the least of which had to do with the times that, that there are all new union members or all regional members, and it doesn't make sense for one of them to be chairs. Or, as what happened a few years ago, we actually had somebody who was a Vice President of the Federal Reserve of Human Resources and could not serve as, did a wonderful job when he was chair. He served for the, he served for the union, couldn't continue in the region, and was more than, when it was a region year, more than wanted to do it. So, if you look at the top of page 7, and if you were to compare this language with the language in your, in your shocking pink book, you'll see that they-
You mean this one?
That one. That we dropped some words that dealt with whether or not it had to go back and forth. That is the only change, that's the only change that exists in that book.
What?
You said, I just said you bring everything.
I don't travel without these.
That's what you said. I'm sorry, that was, that was supposed to be a thought bubble, not a speech bubble. I get confused sometimes.
You'd be surprised at the meetings that we refer to those, so, okay. Anything else for you?
No.
Okay, that's enough anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so before I will entertain a motion to go into an executive session for negotiations for the custodians, I would like to thank Chat TV for taping us tonight, and I also would like to thank Derek for his years of service on the committee. So, thank you very much, and good luck in the future. And we have Kate. It's become a tradition that on the last meeting, that there's Kate for the committee members who are retiring, so we have Kate.
Don't you just disappear?
This has been quite experience and this is a well, it's sort of led in a new direction professionally. I would like to be able to use the elementary school as well as the middle school and high school as a, as a study model for when we're doing, when I'm professionally doing the statistics and the research, and to use this as kind of a, how's this working for you, a sort of, sort of indication. Do you have any questions or problems? Please remember, I still was listed, my email does not change.
Thank you. So, is there a motion to go into an executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy with the custodians, only to return to open session to adjourn?
Why not?
All right, roll call. Derek?
Yes.
Summer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Slager? And myself as an aye. Thank you all. Yes.